Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, May 2, 2017, at 5:50 PM and at 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with the executive session. Executive Session A, Discussion with Legal Counsel Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Mayor, I move we go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We will now begin with a regular meeting and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's remain standing for the prayer. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. We thank you for the many blessings that we have in the city of Brownsville and around the nation. Lord, we ask you to prepare our hearts for the National Day of Prayer on Thursday and increase the unity here in Brownsville and let that unity spread around the nation. Lead and guide each of us and especially today, lead and guide our mayor and commissioners concerning this meeting and every presenter as well, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. We will now have the mayor's activity update.
At this time, I'm going to ask the commissioners that they have the report because of all the different activities that are going on, so I'll let you guys have the report this time.
So, I would like to have a shout, to give a shout out to the veterans and I'll tell you, in Brownsville, and that's, and I'll tell you why. Saturday, I was block walking and I came across many, many homes that were homes of veterans in Brownsville. Then I went home and passed by Veterans Park and saw a ton of people walking the park, walking their dogs, just enjoying the green day. And then I went home and cleaned out a drawer and found a picture of my dad in his Marine Corps uniform. So that told me I needed to give a shout out to the veterans in Brownsville and remind you that there is a veterans help center in City Plaza and it is staffed with counselors twice a, twice a week, right, Michael?
Yes.
Twice a week. So if the veterans in Brownsville need any assistance or would just like to know what's available, please come down to the help center and check it out. Second, I'd like to remind everyone that our first clovia for this year is coming up on Friday from 6:30 to 9:30 PM. We're, our theme is Cinco de Mayo and so come out for another free evening of fun with your children and your family and your friends and check it out. Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to remind everybody that today was the last day of early voting and municipal elections are going on this Saturday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. If you didn't have a chance to go early vote, please, please make the time to go out and vote this Saturday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in our general election. Thank you.
Anything, John?
Not today.
Okay.
If I can bootstrap off of Commissioner Longoria's comment, for those of us that are watching us, really, these are very important elections. The future of our city is in your hands. We need you guys to come out and vote and believe me, when we're looking at federal funding, people look at our voting numbers. So the more turnout we have, the better access we have to federal and state funding. So I ask on behalf of the city for everybody to please go and vote on Saturday.
Just to add to that, earlier today, I went to go vote and I was stopped by a news crew and they wanted an interview asking, "Why are Brownsville's numbers so low this, this year?" And so, you know, I can honestly say that I was baffled and on TV and I, you know, didn't know what to say, but that responsibility is not on me, it's on everybody to go and vote. And just like Commissioner De Leon said, and just like Dr. Gowan just said, so many veterans and so many people have given their lives and done so many things to give us these rights and it's up to us to shape our future. We need to be more active in what we're doing. And just off of that randomly, about three weeks ago, I did a graffiti cleanup and I had about 50 volunteers from local high schools come out, which was really impressive. And I was like on a high and so excited about it, like all of these kids want to be a part of our future and this is incredible, this is our future, this is what we're working with. And then, so the pictures went up on Facebook, a lot of the kids tagged them and whatnot, and then I started getting a lot of comments from other children saying, "You know what? I'm gonna go put it back up. You know what? Give it two days and I'm gonna go re-tag it," and all kinds of horrible stuff like that. And so, it made me so angry at parents, you know? You need to teach your children responsibility and to make sure that they understand that they are the solution and that they cannot be the problem. And so, to all of you parents that instill that and let your kids come out and volunteer, I just want to thank you because you are going the extra mile to make sure that your kids are the future leaders of our city. So, take that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We now will get to proclamations and the first one, I wanted Commissioner De Leon to read on one of my special people and I noticed it's got a lot of fans out here, Coach Frank Maldonado. But before, I'm gonna ask him to come up here and I see some of his former students and, and players. Coach Maldonado is, is a legend in this, in this town, but I think the most, for me, moving was when I first got elected, I asked Coach, "Coach, give me some advice of how to be a good mayor." And he told me, "Real simple, son." He says, "Just keep it low and outside."
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Frank Pancho Maldonado. Whereas Frank Pancho Maldonado was born in 1924 in Berkeley, Texas, to Emery Hildow and Virginia M. Maldonado. As a student athlete at Brownsville High School from 1939 to 1942, Frank excelled in sports, including baseball, basketball, and football. Whereas in 1941, Frank played on the Brownsville High School basketball team, going on to victory in the district championship. Brownsville's high school historic victory would go on record as the first team in Brownsville to accomplish defeat. In 2000, Frank was introduced into the Rio Grande Valley Sports Hall of Fame for his accomplishments as an all-district athlete in basketball and football and for the Brownsville High School Eagles from 1939 to 1942. Whereas in 1941, during the World War II, Frank answered the call of duty and served his country, the United States Army Medical Corps, in New Guinea and Philippines. Frank would participate in the Battle of La Yet Gulf in the Philippines, one of the largest naval battles of World War II. Whereas in 1946, after serving in the military, Frank returned home to the United States. He was accepted to the University of Colorado on a baseball scholarship to major in physical education. Frank's athletic skill earned him a spot on the regular first baseman for the University of Colorado Buffaloes from 1948 to 1951. Upon his graduation, Frank returned home and organized the first semi-professional baseball league in the Rio Grande Valley. And whereas in 1958, Frank married his wife Christine and father two children, Frank Anthony Maldonado and John David Maldonado, with whom he overjoyed to share his love of sports. Frank's passion and dedication to the sportsmanship was instilled into student athletes. He coached over two decades at McAllen High School and Brownsville High School. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the City Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor our coach Frank Pancho Maldonado and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to serve and contribute on our everyday heroes in our community who share their passion and determination with our youth. Signed, the second day of May, 2017, by the mayor and the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas.
Yes?
I'd like to thank to whomever is responsible for this great honor. And I want to say that I see many faces in the audience, of people more deserving or just as deserving. Especially these two that escorted me, my son Frank and my son JD. I, I do want to say that I'm very appreciative of this honor. And I just want to thank everyone and bless everyone here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Father.
Okay, the next proclamation I will read.
Oh, that's me.
They're not here yet?
No, they're not here yet.
Okay.
Is there anyone here for Mr. Cárdenas?
Yes, they are present.
We can continue with Ms. Berta Lucio Caballero and then we go back.
Sure, no, that's fine.
Ms. Caballero, would you please step forward?
So this next proclamation is something that's very special for me. Not only was Mrs. Caballero my grandmother's student, but then, as time changed, Mrs. Caballero became my teacher. She was my seventh grade English teacher and I am so grateful that it was my destiny to be put in her path because even as just a young child who had no idea what was going on, she taught me the importance of speaking and writing and, and how to express yourself and things to stand up for and things to believe in. And so I can honestly say that thanks to her, I now sit here today. So, in this weird way that this world always winds up in a circle, here we are. And I'll go ahead and, and read your proclamation. Okay? A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Berta Lucio Caballero. Whereas, Berta E. Lucio Caballero was born on February 9, 1947, the third of 10 extraordinary children born to Eduardo Andreas Eri Lucio Sr. and Josefina Leendo Lucio in Brownsville. Berta's siblings are B. Lucio Rodriguez, Senator Eri Lucio Jr., Mary Helen Lucio Garza, Maggie Lucio Ariano, Jesse Lucio, Joe Lucio, David Lucio, Robert Lucio, and Richard Lucio. Whereas, in 1965, Berta Lucio Caballero graduated from Brownsville High School. In 1966, she enrolled in Texas Southmost College in Brownsville, Texas. That summer, Berta enrolled in Pan Am University in Edinburgh, Texas, where she earned a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education with a minor in English. In 1976, Berta was accepted to the University of Bridgepoint, Connecticut, and in 1977, she earned a Master of Science degree. Whereas, in 1967, at the age of 20, Berta Lucio Caballero began teaching at Central Junior High. Her career to span 47 years and four states. In 1970, Berta continued teaching in Sacramento, California, and would go on to teach at Stokes Elementary in Rome, New York, before moving back to Brownsville to teach at Lucille Skinner Elementary School. In 1974, Berta taught at St. Louis Diocene Elementary School in New Canaan, Connecticut, yeah, New Canaan, Connecticut, from 1975 to 1980. Berta taught at Tocum Magnet Elementary School and Northeast Elementary School in Stamford, Connecticut. In 1980, Berta returned to Brownsville with her family and accepted a teaching position at Arnufa Oliveda Middle School. Go Dolphins! Where she returned to Brownsville with her family and accepted a teaching position at Oliveda Middle School, where she has taught for the past 37 years. Her passion for teaching has earned her numerous awards and honors, including the 1991 Brownsville Independent School Secondary Teacher of the Year, 1991 Rotary Club Award, 2000 Region One Outstanding Teacher of the Year, 1995 Gifted and Talented Teacher of the Year, 2002 HEB Excellence in Teaching Award, Lifetime Achievement, and the Brownsville Herald's Newspaper in Education 2001 Teacher of the Year. Wow. Whereas, in addition to her lifelong dedication to students of the Brownsville Independent School District, Berta has genuinely generously supported the residents of Brownsville through philanthropic efforts, including her service as St. Mary's Catholic Church, Eucharist, minister and volunteer, nursing home volunteer at Valley Grande Manor, a contributor to the Cameron County Children's Advocacy Center, including Monica's House and Maggie's House, a bond election volunteer for the University of Texas at Brownsville. Berta has also made contributions to the nonprofit organizations such as Friendship of Women, Good Neighbor Settlement House, United Way of Southern Cameron County, and March of Dimes Foundation, and the Bishop of San Pedro Ozenam Center. Whereas, in 1969, Berta Lucio Caballero married her husband, retired United States Air Force Lieutenant Colonel Ruben Jaime Caballero Sr., with whom she raised three children, Claudia Cristina Caballero, Ruben Jaime Caballero, and Dr. Jason Ryan Caballero. Berta's daughter-in-law is Erica Lizette Rodriguez Caballero. Berta and Ruben Jaime Sr. have been happily married for 47 years. Wow. Now therefore, we the members of the Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of authority vested by the Charter of said city, on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Berta E. Lucio Caballero and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to celebrate the retirement and vital contributions of educators in our community like Berta Lucio Caballero, who empower our youth with the knowledge and the skills to succeed for a lifetime, done on the second day of May, 2017.
Can I say a few words?
Mayor Martinez and Commissioners, Jessica, thank you so much for this honor. I am deeply honored, I'm humbled, and Dad is watching from up there, Eri Lucio Sr., and he's very proud of me. I'd like to say that Jessica was my seventh grade English teacher, excuse me, student, outstanding student at that, and her grandmother, Mrs. Tetra, was my fifth grade teacher at Clearwater Elementary, and her aunt, Elise Tetra, was one of my best friends in high school. So, we're very fond of the Tetra family. Again, I'm very humbled, thank you. I have enjoyed teaching all these 40 years and I love it, and I'm ready to retire though in June the 7th. Again, thank you from all the teachers in this planet Earth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, we will now go to a proclamation for Mr. Renato Cárdenas.
Okay. Proclamation, I think we've got the family all here. I see Elsa, Elda Rosa. Ready? Yeah, let's turn her around. Okay. Everybody ready? You know, just like the people that we have read proclamations by before, we as a city commission and I as a mayor have the honor of, of doing these proclamations, but what it shows to us as public servants, it should show to us as public servants, is that as much as we would like to take a lot of credit for the things that we hopefully are doing on behalf of our citizens, we all stand on the shoulders of giants like the people that we wrote proclamations about today and on other occasions when we had city meetings. There's been a lot of people who've done tremendous work for the city and we hope as a commission that we will continue to make them proud for all the efforts that they put forth during their period as public servants. Whereas, Renato Evaristo Cárdenas was born on December the 8th, 1930, in Matamoros, Tamaulipas, Mexico, to Renato F. Cárdenas and Petra Yarial Cárdenas. At the age of 11, Renato moved to Brownsville to live with his aunt. In 1949, he enlisted in the United States Air Force and served until 1952. During that time, Renato earned the rank of Staff Sergeant. Whereas in 1954, Renato enrolled in the Texas Southmost College and graduated in 1957. That same year, he attended Pan American University in Edinburgh, Texas, until 1959. In 1960, Renato purchased a Texaco station and in 1969, he began developing subdivisions in Brownsville, leading him to establish the Cárdenas Development Company, Inc. Two years later, Renato established the Cárdenas Motor Company, known today as Cárdenas Motors, Inc. in Brownsville. He later acquired the Cárdenas Metroplex Mercedes Benz dealership in Harlingen, Texas, and the Cárdenas Ford dealership in Raymondville, Texas. Whereas in 1950, 1955, Renato Cárdenas married the lovely Mary Rose Arismendi Cárdenas, with whom he had five children, Riva Cárdenas McNair, Dr. Elsa Cárdenas Hagan, Rennie Cárdenas, Ricky Cárdenas, and Elda Rose Cárdenas. Whereas in addition to being a successful businessman, Renato dedicated his life to public service. He was elected to serve as a Brownsville City Commission from 1975 to 1982. From 1975 to 1985, he also served as co-founder and chairman of the Valley Community Hospital in Brownsville, what we know today as Valley Regional Medical Center. When the Valley Community Hospital was sold, Renato, along with former members, utilized profits to establish the nonprofit organization in Brownsville, well, to the Brownsville Foundation for Health and Education, which has since distributed over $8 million in scholarships and to the Valley, and to nonprofit organizations in Brownsville. Renato was a founding board member of the Sunrise Bank, which later merged with the First Valley Bank. In addition, he served as a board member of Southern Texas Title Company, board member of the Lower Rio Grande Valley Certified Development Company, board member of the Boys Club of Brownsville, president of the Rio Grande Valley Buick Dealers Association, president of the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council, and vice president of the National Association of Minority Automobile Dealers. And whereas Renato's generous contributions to our community also include a donation of the land on which the Driscoll Children's Hospital Specialty Clinic was built, a donation of the land for the Olmito Elementary School in the Villa Los Pinos subdivision, a Cárdenas Development Company, Inc. development in Brownsville, and a donation of the land for the entrance of the Thicket Burning Center in Harlingen, Texas. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Renato Evaristo Cárdenas and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to recognize his lasting legacy, whose generous, hardworking spirit has created a better quality of life for the people of Brownsville and the Rio Grande Valley, done this second day of May, 2017. Antonio Tony Martinez, Mayor, and the City Commission.
The podium lowers. There's a switch and it'll lower for him.
Want me to say a few words, mother, if you want to? Okay. Mayor, City Commission, and citizens of Brownsville, on behalf of my mother, my twin brother, and my sisters, I'd like to thank you all for recognizing my father and his dedication and service to the community. One of the things that we as citizens of this community have to pull together and, and make Brownsville what it is and make it prosper, and we have to do that by sticking together. My father was a big believer in that we have to help each other out and give back to the community that, that we hear and do business with here in the community. So, on behalf of my mother, my brother, and my sisters, we'd like to thank you all and together, the citizens of Brownsville, if we just do half of what my father does, we can make Brownsville the greatest city in the valley. And one other thing he used to tell us growing up, he says, "You're there to serve, not be served." And those are strong words that have stuck with me since my young childhood and we, we have to have that same mindset and we have to stick together and make Brownsville the best city in the valley that we know it can be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rennie.
And thank you all for your service to the community also.
Next, we have the South Texas American Red Cross Centennial Year.
Welcome. This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, in celebration of the South Texas American Red Cross Centennial Year. This is an important proclamation. As a physician, I'm very well aware of how important the Red Cross is to not only the United States, but really worldwide. Whereas, for more than 135 years, the American Red Cross has stepped into the breach, providing shelter, food, and emotional support to victims of natural disaster, war, conflict, and unexpected hardship. Today, the American Red Cross is responsible for a remarkable 40% of our nation's blood supply, teaches lifesaving techniques to volunteer citizens, rescuers, and leads the world in international humanitarian aid. Whereas, the American Red Cross is a miracle-working organization rooted in the legacy of its founder, Clara Barton, who tore down every convention at the time regarding women in battle, giving history one of the most incredible examples of courage and devotion to duty that it has ever known. Her tremendous legacy lives on through the American Red Cross's assistance to hundreds of thousands of Americans affected by disasters each year. Whereas, in 2016, volunteers responded to 180 significant incidents, including wildfires, storms, flooding, and other emergencies at all times of the day and night. They opened nearly 800 emergency shelters, served more than 4.1 million meals and snacks, and distributed more than 2.1 million relief items. Last year, the American Red Cross helped 79,000 families recover from home fires that left them with no place to go. Whereas, the American Red Cross South Texas chapter, established in the Rio Grande Valley in 1917, impacts and enhances thousands of residents in Hidalgo, Cameron, Willacy, and Starr Counties every year. The Board of Directors, a paid staff of four, and over 200 dedicated and trained volunteers provide disaster relief, education, health, and safety programs, and proudly support our military, our veterans, and their families. And whereas, the American Red Cross South Texas Chapter will continue its mission to supply relief to victims of disaster and help individuals prevent, prepare for, and respond to emergencies. To perform its vital roles, the American Red Cross needs our continued commitment of time, resources, and funds to be successful. During South Texas American Red Cross Centennial Year, we remind our residents of the American Red Cross's commitment to preventing and alleviating human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby celebrate South Texas American Red Cross Centennial Year, and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to celebrate and support the work of service and relief organizations. Done on this second day of May 2017, signed Mayor Antonio Martinez and the Commission.
Thank you. On behalf of the South Texas Chapter and the Texas Gulf Coast Region, we'd like to thank the mayor and the City Commission for this wonderful recognition. We are celebrating 100 years here in the Rio Grande Valley, serving your citizens and the citizens across Rio Grande Valley. So thank you so much, and I hope we get to celebrate 2017, 100 years. But we're also there to prepare for disasters and alleviate human suffering. So we do need volunteers, we do need donations, so please come by, make sure that you spread amongst your citizens. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Next, we have the Presentations Employee of the Month, Officer Juan Antonio Alvarez, Patrolman, A4.
Mayor, members of the Commission, we have made it a tradition to honor one of our first responders during the week, month of May, which is the month that we celebrate Police Memorial Week. And we select one of our candidates from either police or fire, and we are going to honor and celebrate this achievement to one of our police officers this year, this year, this year, this May, Juan Alvarez. This is Juan's family. They are here with us today, so we want to thank him and allow him to be part of this award. Juan has been serving and was hired as a patrolman with a Brownsville Police Department in September 1990. So he's kind of a bionic police officer. He looks very young, because he's been with the city for 26 years as a Brownsville police officer. 18 years he served in our patrol division. During that time, he achieved the honor of being one of our field training officer for being selected as one of our better officers in our city. And of course, that gives him the responsibility to train officers coming into the department. Fantastic job. In 2009, he was assigned to our Criminal Investigations Division as a detective, and that's what he's doing for us today. He is our Columbo. He gets cases, he's persistent, he has worked on cases with us, with our auditors, he's done a fantastic job. And we felt that he deserves this honor. Obviously, his family does, because he's a wonderful family man, and that proves that our police officers can do both, right? And the most important job he has is being the wonderful father and husband that he is today. And so, we give him the plaque. This is not a badge, but it is a pin, so. If I knew your wife was here, I would give her a lady's watch. And of course, Juan has some, a few words for us, and he is eligible for the Employee of the Year at our banquet in December. So congratulations, Juan.
Good evening, Honorable City Mayor. Good evening, City Commissioners, and everybody. Good evening. Thank you very much for the award. It was such a short notice that you barely told me a couple of days, but I thank you very much. And also, I want to acknowledge my family, because they, I've been here 26 years, my wife's been with me all this time. I know it's been hard on her, a lot of cancellations, a lot of places that we couldn't go. But it's been hard on her and it's been hard on me too. Yes, I did 18 years in patrol. I did 10 years as a field training officer. But I've been doing the last nine years as a detective. That's a lot harder than being on the streets. Our work is heavier as a detective because you take it home with you. And I've been able to help a lot of good people. And all I can say is I've always tried to do the best and give the best of me. And that's what I tell my son, too. You don't have to be the best, just give the best from you. And thank you very much again. Thank you especially to the ones that had something to do with the decision-making process and the community, and granted me this award, which I will cherish. Thank you.
Well done. Well done. Thank you.
Congratulations. We now have consent agenda items A through C.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six.
Next, we have Boards and Commissions. Consideration and Action to Appoint or Reappoint Four Members to the Brownsville Beautification Committee.
Mayor, Commissioners, we are bringing to you, we have four openings for the Brownsville Beautification Committee. I do want to recognize here, I think Commissioner Tetra you mentioned, we do have an applicant, Kevin Barajas, and he's one of our younger individuals, so I just want to put that. But we already have four openings, so we ask, how would you like to appoint?
Mr. Lopez, is, there's no issue that he's under 18, right?
There's nothing in our code or anything, or it's in the Charter, it says that.
Put it upon slate. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public hearing.
Public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2017-1625, to authorize the city manager to abandon enclosed portion of a 18-inch alley adjacent to lots 21 and 22 of Block 4 Riverside Park Edition.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is undeveloped 18-foot wide alley, presently not being used. The city of Brownsville will retain a utility estimate over the entire property being abandoned, and we would like to ask for your approval to abandon the alley.
I'll move to approve.
Wait.
Well, it's a public hearing. Any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Move to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Public comment.
Next, we have one public comment.
Buenas tardes, señoras y señores de la comisión, señor alcalde, señor administrador de la ciudad y jefe de la policía. La presencia aquí es la razón de nuestra presencia, es para pedirles el apoyo que necesitamos ahora de ustedes. Vengo acompañado de representantes y dueños de compañías de taxis. La razón es que leímos en el periódico la intención de la compañía Lyft de dar servicio de transportación al público. El punto es que Lyft viene a beneficiar a los clientes o residentes sin un otro beneficio para la ciudad. Trae una comparación. Somos 75 permisos corriendo, de ellos dependen 100 familias locales, y en conjunto dejamos una derrama económica de alrededor de medio millón de dólares. Hablando, 2,400 dólares de seguro que se compra en una compañía aquí local, 2,400 dólares de renta de oficina por año, 600 dólares de pago de Mira para poder trabajar en el puente o en la plaza, 125 dólares del permiso anual por carro, 750 dólares en conjunto los 75 carros para trabajar en el aeropuerto, gastos aproximados de 12 dólares por día en restaurantes que viene dando un total de unos 5,000 dólares al año entre todos, reparación en autopartes como 45,000 dólares, vienen siendo 600 dólares dividido por 75 carros, que viene dando un promedio de como 7,900 dólares, 7,700 por unidad. Y de acuerdo también venimos a hacerles saber que de acuerdo a la ordenanza que está hasta ahorita vigente, la ciudad está siempre, nos hicieron saber que nada más 12 compañías eran suficientes para dar servicio aquí en la ciudad. Ahorita vemos 15. Entonces al acuerdo el que se llegó fue que se fueran eliminando, se fueran retirando el negocio, y cuando llegaran a 12 ya no se iban a dar más permisos de abrir una nueva compañía. Entonces si esta compañía pues está relacionada con la transportación, prácticamente estarían violando la ordenanza que existe y es vigente hasta la fecha, que tiene mucho tiempo que no se ha revisado, pero que hasta la fecha está vigente. Y pues se lo venimos a pedir de la manera más cordial, y es todo lo que les quería hacer saber, que tomaran en cuenta antes de tomar una decisión.
Y le agradecemos mucho a ustedes y todos que están aquí de la audiencia, de choferes. Se lo vamos a reconocer los puntos que nos hizo hoy, y muchísimas gracias.
Gracias a ustedes por oírnos.
Charlie, if you could, could we set up a meeting with the cab drivers? Because we had approved the resolution, and it's my understanding that, I mean, Lyft could start. But we wanted to make accommodations for the cab drivers because the ordinances have not been looked at, phew, in years, and there's a lot of things that are not fair to their business. So if we could set up a meeting?
Yes, I think that would be Charlie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you guys. Okay, item number nine.
Next, we have the action items. Consideration and Action to Adopt Resolution Number 2017-039, authorizing the city manager to file an application with the Federal Transit Administration and Operating Administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by Section 5307 and Section 5339 United States Codes and other federal statutes administered by the Federal Transit Administration and to execute the grant agreement if awarded.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. Brownsville Metro is seeking your consideration and action on filing this year's transit grant funding for Section 5307 Urbanized Area Formula Funds and Section 5339 Bus and Bus Facilities. Brownsville Metro has been using 5307 federal funding since its inception in 1979. This funding provides assistance for capital, operating, and planning expenses in urbanized areas. In March, 7/12 of this formula subsidy was released. Above is the description for this grant. The total local share for this project is $1,4,876, with the federal government contributing $1,435,538 for a 7/12 total project cost of $2,444,414. The remaining 5/12 of this formula subsidy are estimated at $1,025,384 and are projected to be released in July. This would bring our total project cost to $4,176,128, with the city contributing $1,715,260, leveraging $2,460,922 from the federal government. The local amounts were budgeted and approved during the fiscal year 2017 budget process. We come before you today seeking your support and to provide the public with this information.
So we've approved the $1 million already?
Yes, sir, during the fiscal year 17 budget process. We are proposing to use this round of fund.
I have a point of order to Mr. Gonzalez. So does that take into consideration where we're at now? Because I think they lost money. So we approved money for them for the 2016 cycle, they lose it, and then we've approved the 2017 already?
Commissioner, since it's an exception, since we started the transit system several years ago, I think it was in the late 90s, late 70s rather, there's always been a subsidy from the city of Brownsville. As far as we know, there is no transit system in the United States that runs with a profit. All transit systems need to be subsidized. Some cities participate with a sales tax. The city of Brownsville doesn't have a sales tax to put in their local share. But this is something that is not unusual. Because of the low fares that the city charges and the large expenses that are associated with running this type of a system, capital, personnel, et cetera, it is very unlikely that a transit system will have a profit at the end of the year. So there's always been a subsidy from the general fund.
And let me ask you, Mr. Gonzalez, does it, is it reduced every year? Are we putting more money to it?
What we have seen, what we have seen the last few years is the federal government has continued to stay at the same level, or actually has reduced the funds that come to the city. In the past, for several years, the Transit Administration was providing 50% of monies to cover the loss of the system. That percentage, I think today, is now around 30 to 35%, and it continues to decline every year. So when it declines, that means that the local community has to put in some of the monies. What bus has done in the past is that they've done some other, trying to raise other revenues that will supplement some of the monies that the general fund has been doing. For instance, advertising is one example that can be used as the local share. But as if I recall, if I recall from the very, very start, there's always been a subsidy from the general fund.
Now, knowing that, I wouldn't be often asking like I have for two years, what's our contingency plan, right?
What is the contingency plan?
I mean, if every year they're just, they keep cutting it.
Well, I guess the contingency plan was to come up with another revenue source. For a year, at one time in the 80s, for instance, the, before we had the type A and the type B sales tax, we went before the city to the voters and asked for what we called a transit tax to support the transit system. That election failed. The voters did not approve it. And so we were left off with general fund as the contributor for the local funds. But that's another revenue source that other cities have implemented through a transit tax, but we don't have that capability anymore because the largest, there's a cap, and the tax, the cap is 2%. Right now, we have already reached the 2 cents. The general fund gets a penny and a half, and the other, the other two goes to GIBIC, the other half goes to GIBIC and BCIC.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Sorry about that.
No problem, no problem.
It's an ongoing discussion.
No problem, no problem. I welcome it. We're proposing, sir, and everyone, to use this round of funding for two activities. The first being capital, which would be, which would provide resources for preventive maintenance in the interest of continuing to provide excellent transit service to your constituents. In this slide, you will note a bus from our 2001 fleet that has been maintained and upkeep through PM funding. The other activity we are proposing to use this funding for will be operating. For fiscal year 16 alone, 1,319,897 passenger trips were recorded using our fixed route service. This year, we project a growth spurt in ridership to 1,481,872 passenger trips due to added service in the mall area and realignment to some of our routes. The next grant we will be discussing and are applying for is Section 5339, which provides funding for bus and bus facilities to replace, rehabilitate, and purchase bus and related equipment. We are projecting that the Federal Transit Administration will release $225,216 in a federal subsidy for Brownsville Metro. However, in March, only 7/12 of this formula funding was also released. The federal share for this project is indicated at 85% or $131,376, while the local share is 15% or $23,184. Total 7/12 project cost is $154,560. As noted above, an estimate shows the remaining 5/12 of the subsidy anticipated to be released in July. Some important grant facts are that to purchase one transit vehicle, we have to accumulate two years' worth of funding. As indicated- As indicated above, the cost of one transit vehicle is roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For this year alone, we are projecting two hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and sixteen federal dollars, which would be two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars short of what is necessary to buy a transit vehicle. Therefore, through our quarterly reports and constant communication with the FTA, the city of Brownsville works closely with them in the best interests of replacing these vehicles. For the next replacement of a transit vehicle, we will combine fiscal year seventeen and fiscal year eighteen funding. As mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, we respectfully request your authorization to file this year's federal formula grants for sections fifty-three oh seven and fifty-three thirty-nine as presented. Thank you for taking this into consideration and for your help in seeing public transportation continue to thrive. With your support, we are able to continue providing these services to your constituents in Brownsville who rely on these services to get to various places of interest.
Very good. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Item number ten.
Next, we have the contracts, consideration action to approve appraisals and appraisal review services under the term contract for land acquisition consulting services for the Brownsville South Padre International Airport.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. We're basically just adding the appraisal services to the existing land acquisition services with the existing land acquisition consultant for the runway expansion project at the airport.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next, we have item eleven, consideration action to approve the agreement sets forth the terms between Valley Transit Company and the city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro for the Metro Connect service funded through TechStots intercity bus program, ICB sixteen oh one and seventeen oh one.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm RJ Garza for the record, Assistant Director for B Metro. I'm happy to be here. I'm respectfully requesting your consideration and action to approve the agreement before you. This agreement is between Valley Transit Company and the city of Brownsville, B Metro for the Metro Connect service funded through TechStots intercity bus program, ICB sixteen oh one and seventeen oh one. The purpose of this agreement is to set forth the relative responsibilities of the parties. The city of Brownsville's B Metro serves as a fiscal, fiscal agent for the Metro Connect project, and Valley Transit Company serves as one of the partners, along with the city of McAllen and the city of South Padre Island. Staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number twelve, consideration action to approve a three-year contract with two-year options with First Transit for transit fleet maintenance services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Eddie Velarde from city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro. I'm the fleet maintenance contract manager. And for your consider, consideration and action before you is an agreement with First Transit Incorporated for transit fleet maintenance services. The primary term of this contract will be three years, followed by two two-year renewal options. Over the primary term, the annual operating target slash budget will be one point, or one million four hundred and three thousand five hundred and nine dollars. Your backup documentation includes the recommendation to approve this contract, please.
Sir, is that one million for one year or three years?
No, that's annual, annual. Primary term is three years, so it's one point four million annually.
Are you honest? And why three years? Why not two years or one year? Why three years?
It's, the previous con, just, you know, going on the template from, from the past, the previous was.
Was it First Transit?
A big pardon?
Was it the same company in the past?
It happened to be the same company, yes.
Why does it have to be the same one?
It just happened to be. So, so, again, we went through the RFP, RFP process. Submittals were, of course, received. The submittal committee was, the submittal review committee was convened, and they judged all the submittals. And it just happened that this, this contractor was the, the first finalist.
And what happens, sir, if, let's say, we have, I mean, a really bad year, we crashed some of our buses, they have a lot of leaks, I mean, bad comes to worse, I mean, we have some flooding, I mean, and we go over the one point some million dollars. How does that work?
Over, the one point four, of course, is, is the budget. We, if we exceed that, up to a hundred and ten percent of the budget, the city and the contractor would split fifty, fifty percent of the overage. Over the hundred and ten percent, that would be theirs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen.
Thank you, good evening.
Consideration action to authorize the city manager to execute a term contract for retail electric provider services for the city of Brownsville.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. Today, I'm going to introduce Darrell with Redondo, Marco Redondo, Retail Energy Consultants to cover this item. I'm going to pass out some backup information.
Lupe, if you could, please, before he explains, could you kind of briefly tell us, because I think we have a zone, we have an exclusive zone through P U B, but then after deregulation of the market, there's a couple of places in Brownsville where we have to contract with A E P or other third-party companies, right?
That is correct.
If you could give us some background before we actually hear him out.
Actually, he was going to cover, but just in brief briefing, there are some energy-only accounts throughout the city that are not serviceable by P U B. They, they have to be serviced by, by independent retail providers, whether it be Magic Valley, or in this case, there's thirty-eight accounts that need to be serviced by retail providers out there. This, the purpose of this is to solicit a competitive purpose, solicitation to get the best retail purchase that we have.
And that would be for stuff that the city needs, such as street lighting?
Exactly. It's strictly street lighting and street light, like signals, traffic signals and street lights only. I'll give you some backup while I.
So, again, we're here for, to request, Honorable Mayor and the city commissioners, for the consideration and action to authorize the city manager to execute a term contract for a retail electric provider services for the city of Brownsville. Last Thursday, the city has already requested for submittals from many different competitive retail electric providers to provide their best value package and rates for the city of Brownsville. And like he was saying, for those thirty-eight accounts that are under A E P territory, that is deregulated, so you can get your own rate, we actually attached on the second page of that, the daily analysis that we do for all of the competitive companies that are giving you these best value packages with their prices. We're looking at about locking in, hopefully if prices stay low tomorrow. The reason we need you to authorize the city manager is because every day at five P M, the energy market shuts down, so it'll refresh tomorrow morning, and we need a contract that starts in May twenty seventeen this month. So, we're already looking at prices around three cents as the competitive rate right now, so that's actually going to save you all about twenty-two thousand dollars a year, or what we're looking at recommending a potential sixty-month contract would save you about a hundred and ten thousand dollars for y'all's utility budget. So, that is actually what we're here asking for your consideration, so that the city manager can work with us and our recommendations, and the city attorney to approve a contract for a specific term that offers the best value and savings for the city of Brownsville.
Now, what happens if, I mean, tomorrow it opens up, where everybody, we're buying on the spot market, I mean, we can hedge our bets one or two years, but I mean, five years? I mean, we don't know where the energy market will be in five years.
Yeah, and that.
Do you recommend we lock in right now at low rates? Or do you think the markets, right now, we have a soft market, so?
Yeah, so, right now, just based off of the way that gas and oil has been playing out, I think you've all noticed that prices are all-time lows right now. So, that being said, because of the type of utility accounts that you'll have with A E P, which are street lights and cities, and city traffic signals, that is actually guaranteed load. Y'all are always using that energy, which is why y'all are getting such a low rate at three cents or lower, which is very rare for government entities like that. So, that being said, right now, based off of just the past fifteen years since deregulation began, right now is actually the absolute lowest that the price has ever been, and based on oil and gas companies, since these energy producers actually use eighty percent natural gas to create this energy, we're not expecting these prices to go very much lower than they already are at. If anything, there's an eighty-five percent chance that they're going to continue to slowly rise over the next ten years, and that's just due to market demand on gas and oil.
So, two questions, Darrell. The one, if we're locked in, let's say, next year, there's an over demand and the prices start rising, we're locked in for five years, right?
Yes.
And the second question on this awesome chart, where can I find the kilowatt-hour price?
The kilowatt-hour price, sorry. I guess the kilowatt-hour prices are actually always used right here.
Okay.
So, they actually tell you the different terms, any of them, twelve months to seventy-two months, and each one of these prices is based off of the different.
Company.
And so, those just show you the different prices for each different term by the competitive companies that have given submittals to the city already.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor, I'll move to adjourn and remind everybody to please go vote this Saturday from seven AM to seven PM.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.